We're going to go through a period of transition with our seven eastern counties in Rolling Hills. We continue to look at ways of economic development. As you may know, the county's partnering with the city of Sioux City on the reinvestment district. And so we're appreciative of IDEA, or IEDA, cat grants that we've been able to participate in, as well as comprehensive plans with rural communities, partnering them with SimCo dues. And then recent flooding has, of course, as you well know, has been a challenge, but it's been met with great work by emergency management and our secondary roads, freeway room, or sheriff's office, and so on. So that's just kind of some of the things on a 30,000-foot view that we've been dealing with over the last year or so. And so with that, we were thinking that might be helpful for each of us just to know from your perspectives, over a couple of minutes each, committees that you sit on and priorities that you're working on and that you'd like to let us know about by way of introduction. So, want to start, Jake?
Sure. So I sit on Ways and Means, state government, local government, and the budget systems, appropriations, so the, or as I said, is the property tax capital, which will probably come up in this week, next week. So the insights that you have in particular, that you have, or I do know that sincerely that people on the subject of me, the rest of us on committees as a whole, want to identify on the consequences. I know something that just, we kind of just, association kind of just brought to our attention I think on Friday, of concerns of, is basically the intentions is not to, in fact, grow, new growth development. So one concern is how you change the definition of brand if you add land that's farmland, and now it's going to be used for housing development, and maybe there's no change to it, but now the value has just increased dramatically. But that would be considered a move in growth essentially in terms of various evaluations. So there's a lot of those that, as you guys are aware of, maybe some of those issues, we want to, you know, where that's, and correct those things if they're not intended very upfront. But yeah, more than that, you can explain at least my understanding of the, of the, of this topic. Yeah, so that, that'll come in Ways and Means, state government, local government, most of the other committees of the year, because the second one was.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, I sat on education, local government, natural resources, and transportation. And actually, all those committees are in the last two, unless a house, some of the roads in there, something that you don't have to, have to happen. Going forward, you know, continuing to address the flood, Senator Hope and myself have proposed, you know, a partial bailout, I guess, with businesses, basically targeted because FEMA doesn't really help businesses very much. That was one thing I heard in warning when I was down there on Saturday morning as well everywhere else. I mean, can you imagine the schools are operating without water, without sewer, with quarter hours, the hospital doesn't have water, you know, may not, is in a, a week, or a week there. So it's going to take a long time to stop all the damage. But I thought we had a very good tour, and now we're waiting to see, you know, what the government, governor, local, and so we, you know, kind of, why do we jumpstart the conversation going forward? I don't want to take too much time, because I really want to talk about the three bills that, that you listed, some of that, waiting, until September, September, go back to those.
That's good, because you would have had a timer stopped. I said, I would say, you went to number on, I said, on Labor, Veterans, Local Government, and Budgets for Justice. I've been working really hard to make sure that we keep some quality cameras here. The state is kind of, kind of, quite at their point, but of course, according to the point registered right this morning, but we do have a list of what made it what's eligible. I'm trying to find our bills here to see if they were wrong there. You'll find me mainly work on anything that, that I take local control away, I'm going to be against it, speaking against it at that time. I know that we can do a better job up here, because we know what we're based on, we just try to leave the state control same. We're getting questions, I hope, from you, to try to find these on your local, here to see if they are actually eligible at this time.
Jim?
They are.
Yep, are you ready? This is my experiment.
Your turn.
All right. So obviously, the flood presents a lot of challenges and issues, and advocating that we get adequate resources through disaster care management, homeland security, DOT, wherever we can. Read an article in the Journal a few weeks ago, and justify the reason the property tax or the valuation of residential property go up 10% a single year. And the, the out of export index presents the lower fixed income people and middle income people. And then, you know, equally concerned about being commercial property tax valuations go up 35% a single year, when we have numerous open storefronts, commercial property all around Sioux City. I'm kind of wondering if that's a reflection of reality or something else. And so, you know, the conversation, I think the real life, the, the year today is about that 2% cap that's being talked about, you know, and at the same time, the state mandating several levies on you guys and the relationship between those two things. And, you know, this morning to have some type of, you know, all things being equal, the relationship between the levies and the valuations, valuations aren't going to go up that much, what are we going to be doing on the levies? And so, you know, I hope to get some good information from you all in our regard, and your thoughts.
And what committees are you sitting on currently there, Jim?
Oh, okay. Labor, you know, resources, veterans affairs, and I'm also in the Justice Department Committee as well.
Thank you. All right, so seeing that, we'll move on to different issues. One thing that our county engineer had brought up, Senate File 184, Mark, would you like to come up and speak on that? We do have some backup material on our board meeting, think it was meant to.
Did you give him a copy of the resolution? No, I did bring some.
Senator, you can add it.
I know I reached out to you by email, and I sent out some information earlier on this. I appreciate the response, Senator, on that. This bill is one that gives us a good deal of concern, not because of the 130 pound, 1,000 pound load necessarily, because we already have those running on the roads. But we have them running on our roads under permit. When we have an overweight permit come in, we analyze any bridges that are along the route of the hauler a long way. We're actually permitting loads up to 156,000 pounds. But again, we're checking our system and making sure that our bridges and pavements are capable of carrying the load. The issue with Senate File 184 that is particularly objectionable to County Engineers Association, and a big concern to the board as well in passing a resolution, is the fact that under DOT permit, those vehicles will not be allowed to run on county roads on a route without consultation of the county. This can cause damage to thinner seal coats, thinner asphalt pavements that are out there, some of our aging six-inch pavements in spring, we'd rather not see those heavier loads going on them. We tend to reroute around those at this time of the year. And this bill, for the first time, takes that out of our hands. There has been discussion going back to former Director Romino, DOT, about having a statewide permit system. I don't know if you know, but Woodbury County and Sioux City participated in a pilot project to take a look at doing that. The system can work, but it's going to be costly to put into place. There's over 10,000 county bridges just on the paved road system that would require special analysis to determine the load rating factors that are necessary to put into that state system. Just to do seven bridges in Woodbury County, it costs $50,000 in inspection and analysis to make County Road D-12 or Highway 140 into Sioux City, if you know where the northernmost exit of Sioux City is, and get those bridges covered under the DOT permitting program. Basically, what this does is, if you know the configuration of the axles, how much each axle weighs, the spacing between them, it runs the equation through automatically, and allows permitting staff to determine whether or not the load can be carried by a bridge. I don't believe the county engineers would have objection if a statewide permitting system is put into place, but we're talking literally millions of dollars to make that happen. And it's sometime in the distant future. As for this, we would sooner see the bill at least amended so that if there is a route needed by these rainouts logging trucks. But if this passes, what we're afraid of is that, hey, loads would like to go by 8,000 sometimes. We have other haulers for construction and materials hauling that would also like to do heavier loads as well. We're concerned about having that permitting process and our ability to take care of and monitor our bridges when we have financial responsibility to take away from some future. I guess that's in a nutshell. If you got any questions, I can address them.
No, I'll just say, I sat on that transportation committee, so when the bill came forth, I wasn't on the set. As it was explained to me, it really was targeting a very specific area of Iowa, where I guess the logging trucks were having to go clear out their way to whatever they were loading. So therefore, of course, a bill came to address that, that had impact from the state, which happened, perfectly, it seems like, Iowa, against it, I called you, that part, that two gets an input. So I don't know if there's support for it going forward, to wait and see.
And again, I think, you know, there's a point about if it was just even amended to, you know, give the county the notice so that we can determine the routes they could go on, you know, that would, that would be helpful.
A couple points of clarification, though. The bill was sold to Mean Motorsaw in the line of the three-wheel sprayers, the great big machines like that, and you can still get wakers for any of those, correct?
Yes, and there is a permitting system for those vehicles already set up. And there is the possibility of giving them wakers if they need it, if they're required to obey all bridge postings. And typically, those sprayers are coming in with 80,000 pounds, albeit they have heavier axles if they're going to the roads. That permitting system has been in place for a number of years, and it's, appears to be working at this time, we haven't had a check into it.
No, if it turns back up, I'll certainly take a look at that and then let you see.
Again, our legislative committee on which I sit has proposed some amendments to the folks that are pressing this bill. You know, one of the problems that I see with the two is they're trying to find a truckload of logs as an indivisible load. I mean, put fewer logs on the trailer. This is one of the problems we've had with some of our other issues, where they have the overloads desired and pushing those vehicles above that 20,000 pound axle rating that our bridges are rated for, that you don't have to go fill to the gills going down the roads. It's just one that we hope, but it can be amended in a manner that at least consults the county so that we can protect our infrastructure. Thank you.
Any other questions on that, or kind of?
I just, I have a couple of questions, but, you know, how do they handle South Dakota trucks with heavier loads coming in to Iowa, a few large ones, because that's, that's something, what I understand is a fairly frequent thing.
Yeah, you're.
I mean, if the legislation is just to look at, on those type of loads, the logging communities, that might be one way to address it, but my understanding that the area farmers would also like to see those load limits raised to 90,000 pounds, and what would your take be on something like that?
You're referring to the Interstate Compact, which covers Nebraska and South Dakota loads coming into Iowa to BDM and some of our other grain processors in the area. That allows up to 110,000 pounds. It's restricted to specific highways and bridges that have already been rated. And again, this is something that works within the existing law already. The routes that have been allowed, basically, they can run interstate down to the Salix exit, so they can either access the Salix or the Fort Neil interchange to get off the highway with these deliveries. They're coming typically through Nebraska or South, Highway 29, through, from South Dakota. And again, this is one where all the permitting authorities have cooperated. We've been extended that 110,000 pound load on our roads. But in that area, we're looking at 80 inch concrete pavements to handle that, and we have no bridges on any of those roads that are under county means. So again, that works, and it's, it's an example of where, what we're looking for with the cooperative consultation between local and state officials in making this work and establishing routes that are safe for these vehicles to use. With a 90,000 pound load, the governor does their emergency proclamation each year, typically as long as the loads are legally going down the road, which is 20,000 pound axle loads. Tannim axles are legally 34,000, that 90,000 pound loading allows you to get up to 20,000 pounds per axle. It stays within that area which we've already analyzed our bridges. And again, our concern is that just because a bridge is posted doesn't mean it can't take unlimited loads. But we have analyzed our bridges for the 96,000 pound triad, agricultural and construction loads. So if a bridge isn't posted, we know we're good up to that point. The 90,000 pound load is a standard semi, tannim axles, semi tannim axles on the trailer. And again, that stays within that 20,000 pound axle load, and our unposted bridges and the majority of our pavements can handle that, especially in the fall when we're not dealing with a spring load. We don't, we're not under that proclamation right now in the spring, when our roads are sensitive to those loads. That's been working, Senator, for a while.
Thank you.
Do you have any follow-on there, Jim, or?
No, I'm no, I, I said thank you, I missed you there. I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so any other questions, Conus? Are I keeping?
I just wanted to say, I wasn't familiar with this before I got the mail from Mark, because the Senate has this come up at all in the House, I was assuming the House isn't going to look at that. I think this was an issue that was at least discussed last year, I remember some talking about logging the leaves. My opinion would be if it is, if the goal is to address a specific industry that's a part of the state, then write that in the law. Just, I think, for Mark's, so it's not sort of in context or issue ways, but not necessarily reaching the intent.
I am a little bit familiar with that area, and some of the logging, that was my old stomping grounds before I came here. But what, what I think is troubling is, there must, those loads, the 130,000 pounds could already be permitted under the current system of the county. Each of those trucks could have 130,000 pound permit, just like Leaver's trucks do, just like some of the larger semis that are already operating on our roads. We issue annual permits for overweight loads when people come in, give them the configuration of the maximum weight, so they're under.
So all this would do is allow that without the permits?
Pardon me?
So all this would do is allow that without the permits, essentially?
It, it's allowing the DOT to issue permits, which makes me wonder if there's some kind of a conflict, maybe the county doesn't feel their road can take that load, so they have not been permitting it, and they're trying to go around that. You know, without knowing more background, I can't say. I haven't been able to talk to the county engineer in that part of the state to find out what his specific concern is. Theoretically, those could already come under the permitting authority that each county has. And this is one of the other things that's discerning, why are we running around that system for the sake of the logger? Again, I view this as the first step toward overruling county authority to regularly overload. As I said, there'd already been discussion of that in the direction of Romino. Truckers would like to have a one-stop shop for permits, and we don't have that right now, and they've got to call each of us. There's, there's a lot of issues that are undercurrent here. I wish I could express, tell you what's going on here, what I can.
It almost sounds like the DOT wants to benefit from the permitting fees while the county would suffer the structural damage and repairs.
Well, the fees aren't that.
Well, but there's still, but there's still no benefit to the county, because we don't have the knowledge of which way this is going to go.
That's true.
Kind of like the cannon gets its nose in the tin, so.
And we still do get some logging trucks operating on our system. When we had a lot of the increase in corn prices, some old walnut groves and oak groves were taken down, those same trucks could be coming on Woodbury County's system, although we don't have a direct route to Sawmill in all cases. Once you say, once you let logging trucks in there, it doesn't matter where they are in the state.
And I, my one comment ought to be the overall picture of it is just one of the issues we're talking about in general, and that's local control. Because the counties have a permitting process. Part of that process is we check the roads, we test them, the bridges, to make sure they're good enough. Or if the DOT takes it over, they just come in and we don't know for sure where they're going. So it's, it's part of local control and a little bit of safety, because they'll just let them go, and we don't know for sure where they're going.
Frequently, it's not the load, but place and height that takes them down. And that's where, that's why I have so much gray here.
Or lack thereof, that's.
That's true.
I think we've about covered everything on that there. Let's move on to a little no-hall discussion here. Do you have anything else there, Jim? All right, I heard.
No, I don't.
Okay, sorry, I heard a noise, so I didn't know if that had something. So House File 690, 691, Senate File 479, Jeremy's going to take this, and I might chime in on it, too, here.
So as you know, Woodbury County is now a part of Rolling Hills region, and seven other counties to the east. And one of the things that we're looking at for this next year, for fiscal year 20, is all of the legislation that came last year that mandates new services, which are all very good. Mobile crisis, for example, will have, if law enforcement is called out to suicide ideation, there may be people from the crisis center or from Sumlanal Health that will accompany law enforcement. And then we want to increase the deflection rate from the hospitals. So instead of bringing them up to the fifth floor of behavioral health, they can go, if they're not deemed an immediate danger to others, they could go to the crisis and stabilization center. Access centers, as you may know, are going to be sort of the one-stop shop, 23-hour observation, not 24, 23. And so all of these are very, very good. The difficulty is, just in Woodbury County, we dedicated 322,000 for this next year. The other seven counties dedicated 300,000. We are just above their entire population, are 102,000 to the 98,000. So those are going to be new property taxes, about 622. Those are just startup costs. We understand the need for the children's system. When we looked at Woodbury County joining Rolling Hills, we were actually an anomaly that serviced children. Whole county doesn't, most of the regions have not. And I believe the other seven counties were good in saying, we're going to keep some of your systems in place, including the ARC. There was, Sanford Center was funded, and Sumlanal Health was funded to certain degrees, because they didn't want to do away with those programs and then find out what has now happened, which is that we are taking on the children's system and have to restart. With that said, I guess our collective heartburn, a little bit, is that in addition to the Medicaid dollars, looking at the fiscal note, you know, over the next two years, about 8.4 million dollars to the regions, and then if private insurance doesn't call for residential services, there's about four and a half million over and above that. And so that's just going to be a very heavy lift, I think, for property taxpayers. If we represent 15% of the entire state's population, we can just do the math, we're looking at a couple of million dollars just over the next two years in property tax increases. I know that the property tax reform proposal exempts the mental health levy from increases. And so my worry is, looking at both of those, and just stepping back, whatever limitation on growth, and we'll talk about this coming up next, we have been very, very close to that 2% cumulatively, we think would be way outstripped by taking on $2 million over the next two years. Property taxpayers would then turn around and say, what the government is doing, and we would probably say, the state is making us do these things. And so that's just a, basically, that opened up a dialogue. If there are other funding appropriations being discussed, I know originally they talked about federal block grant dollars going to mental health centers, and that one is already spoken for. And so they walked back on that. And so just wanted to see if there's discussions on funding, or what the, what the thoughts of what the slayers are on that.
I think the mental health bill we passed this year was more of a plan on how we're going to take care of children's mental health. We did not bring new dollars, that's a problem. So we have a blueprint without the dollars that are coming. My biggest fear is that just to make it look good, or more important, they'll take them as a portion of the state, and rock, Peter, cake, all type of situation. I do would be expect the funding to increase as the state government grows. But at this point, it is just, I see it more as just a plan on how you're going to, how we're going to pay for it. I wish it would, I really do. At this point, it's pushing it all right back to the local counties and regions.
You know, what's kind of interesting is, you know, my perspective from before is that every year, the legislature had to kind of take on a TIP bill. It's like, the TIP bill for this year, TIP bill for that year. It kind of like gutted TIP, but made it not as useful in the long run. And it seems like mental health has kind of become a kick, when you get a bill last year, and before you can even implement it and see the effects, there's already another bill this year, and it changes things more. And again, if, if you're asking us to cover more services, but use the same dollars, it kind of creates that squeeze of, you know, well, what are we going to have to cut now to provide these new services? Now luckily, our region was kind of already in, in the mindset of covering a little bit on child services, but, you know, other regions are going to be in big trouble. And then, of course, there's other regions that just never spent any money, and they have tons of money, they don't care what you're going to do. But that's, that's kind of one of the difficulties in passing a statewide bill on this, is that every region's kind of in a different position. And like I said, a lot of people haven't even figured out how to implement all the changes from last year's bill.
Well, you know, we haven't talked about this bill yet, but I was sitting going down last night, I was reading the bill, reading the fiscal, and I appreciate that, so I'm going to have to get ready for it anyway. And to be quite honest, I bought that file when I saw the fiscal bill, and how it passed against the regions, because there's two ways to fund this, and that's property tax dollars and Medicaid. I mean, and right now, I haven't heard of another sustainable funding source. So you're absolutely right, it's going to have an impact, and it's hard to know what they're doing. The committee meets, I've asked so many times on what it's act, that I have the feeling that there's still a lot of discussion with them, trying to, trying to fund it. You know, to highlight, I went back and looked up, originally, this is when the governor gave the budget. There was 11 million over 20. There was eleven million over two years additional Medicaid funding for the adult system. Okay? Supposedly they're going to ease up on your psychiatric required tax. So I don't know where you're at, so you know.
Yes, we target thirty percent this year.
I don't know, do we have to do that?
We, we did that because we didn't know what the legislature was going to do. And so instead of going to twenty percent, as, or was assumed to have, that was passed legislation some time before, to be done, we targeted thirty percent, just knowing that there were some flex and have understood that there's, that's a better moving target now.
Yes, and it looks like maybe they're going to hold twenty-five percent. I think I read that in the bill, so we may have five percent in play, but there's still the three million to train teachers, you know, on identifying, you know, how the grants have to be decided on who is going to do that. You know, there's top of the ADAs, there, you know, this is all on here in the second hand. Some of the regions are saying, we don't think we should do that, that's, we're not equipped. So there seem to be some domain discussions, I guess, on who's going to do that part. To that I believe you, you know, more than I do on that. There's also funding for four additional psychiatric residencies at the University of Iowa, and that's targeted practice in rural communities. But that's what there is for funding. And basically, this is supposed to have a government's board set up, if I understand correctly. So that's one of the jobs. And then I guess the border services develop on what those services are too. I, I just stay in touch and I don't know, we don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry to say, but I will say I had as much pause when I read it as you did. Because projections for revenue are down, they're about half the issue of what they thought originally they were going to be because of the outbreak that was given to the top wage earners. So therefore, not nearly as much money. They're looking at also doing away with the inheritance tax, which is going to be another million, you know, even some dollars of him to the state kitchen if that goes away. So they're setting up a scenario and they lose, I'm not in the leadership, every time I go on the subpoenas, on the losing side of it, on many of these issues. And services, you guys, I'm afraid are going to be forced into a decision on if you're going to keep your services or not. Everyone's going to go. Because you're having so many constraints put on with spending. So if, I don't have the news, it makes me sick. I think this is a great level of government and I don't think we should be trying to squeeze it a pass on for the mandates. I'm vocal against that, I continue to be work through me, but it's like the train is going and I can't stop. We need to get very active with, you probably have more influence than I do. You know, most of you are all the same for the part. I would. Yes, it is. I think we should go into the next bill because.
We've got to finish this one first.
I was going to come to this, but I, I think that it's, it's a great thing, for one of the reasons that you brought up, Woodbury County is kind of a problem. It's, it's great to talk about local control, the truth is, our children's mental health was happening across the country. And, and so I do agree that more needs to be done, but, you know, basically with that bill then is create a structure in which we're connecting people to services and, and where the children hopefully will fall through the cracks. I think that that's something we can agree on. I think the issue is, when we talked in the last forum, was how does that? So I think that should be a discussion, but, you know, I think to do something with children's mental health, it's important specifically, I think the mandate that you within the region, that their job is basically to identify what the services are in schools or wherever, who can serve them. There's an assumption that a lot of those services are going to be covered by Medicaid, or at least they're covered, or some are covered by Medicaid right now, and we're just not connecting people to those services. But I do think everybody agrees that it's going to cost above the beyond. And to your talk at the beginning about what discussions have been had, there's some talk, I've heard from the Senate, of doing away with or scaling down the backfill and using that dollars to take over the mental health levy. There's some talk of if next year we can do something with the, the kind of sales tax for three et cetera, that I will, that they, that they provide a second use for other property tax rooms such as, as Byron, or eliminated mental health levy. So I do think there's some talk of the state taking over that portion of funding, which would include the children's mental health portion. But we need to make sure that there are unnecessary consequences between that and then.
Did you forward manage this bill in the House?
No.
I, I will tell you, Jacob, I fully agree that children's mental health, this is an issue needed to be addressed. When I first got elected to this board, I was amazed to find out that it was strictly adult mental health that we took care of. I said, wait a minute, you know, if you handled it as juvenile mental health, maybe the cost for adult mental health wouldn't be so bad.
And what I know is even with some of the certain meetings, the mental health regions were saying, well, don't the schools take care of this? And the schools were saying, don't the mental health, please take care of this? And nobody seemed to know that it wasn't really.
Yeah, so I, I fully agree with you, this had to be done. Just a matter of who pays for it and how.
And it's good to know, I appreciate the numbers as far as, you know, potentially the thirteen million dollar cost across the state, you said about two million.
Right, if you just say fifteen percent roughly. And, and just two quick notes on that. Under President Obama, there's a Project Aware grant that the Sioux City Schools utilized, and so that is running out as of now. So Boys and Girls Home actually won that, that contract. And so I agree, this is something that we, we need to look at, need to do. The statewide system, none of the policy language, I think, is objectionable. And so I think everyone, both sides out, should be commended, and the governor for bringing this forward. It's just, and we have increasingly built private insurance, and that was something that I just think wasn't a priority in yesteryear. So we are asking for folks to use insurance as they should, or use Medicaid, but these would be costs over and above that. And so if there's anything to maybe compromise or take away, it's not, we don't want to be seen, I don't think, as being naysayers. It's, is there one part of the structure of the seven things? Is there a timeline over the next two or three or four years in the phase of implementation? I just think that there's, you know, there's a lot of good here. We just, we're doing a lot right at one time. And it is going to be property tax heavy, so.
And I appreciate what Keith said about the mental health was passed last year. I think a lot of times the legislature, we forget that when you pass something, that just doesn't happen. I assume there's a lot of things with these stabilization centers and others that are still being.
Oh, and, yeah, we are just looking right now at, we have two crisis centers. They have one, we have one. So, and then we're now mandated to have an access center. So do we turn one of those in, or do we put one in Cherokee? I mean, there's just a lot. In fact, on Friday, documents, our, our CEO spent seven hours, and I had a lot of folks from Woodbury County, just talking about three of the new things from yesteryear and how we're going to implement them next year. And so those are new, and this is new, so. Senator Carlin, did you, I didn't want to not give you time, I'm sorry.
See, I'm going to, I'm going to, I just have a couple of questions and then I have to go.
Yep.
Well, I mean, the big question, that's, that we wonder about, you know, with the new higher valuation, doesn't that be adequate to cover the cost of the different mandates? Are the, you know, are the added mandates going to cost way more than the two percent? And, you know, I, I think the reform should reflect the realities that added doesn't cover any new mandates. Like, in terms of the actual numbers, you know, would you be comfortable allowing counties to provide numbers, reflect the cost of mandates on top of, by top of a cap? You know, the two percent is not a hard cap, but, you know, at some point we have to say, and we have some accountability to deliver it, the taxpayers on what they're being asked to pay, you know, incrementally each year, or, or, and, you know, if we get beyond that two percent, the idea is, well, if we get beyond the two percent, or some number close to that two percent, we would like, we'd like to, you know, one of the, one of the ideas, basically, is having the county board supervisors go for those tax increases. You know, and I don't think it's fair to you guys to impose a bunch of mandates on and say, here, you guys bear the responsibility of that, but at the same time, you know, are giving more consideration and some more accountability to the taxpayers.
I'll respond to that if that's all right. And this may just be my personal perspective, but I don't think that having a, a limitation out there is necessarily a bad thing. You know, it's kind of like a diet and accountability, nobody likes it, right? But we all understand that there's, there's something there. And you're right, if valuations are increased by thirty-five percent and ten percent on residential, and we were increasing our budget next year by twenty-one percent and saying, but we have the same levy, then that would be, that's a point well taken. If you look at the levy, we've decreased it the last five years, and there's been times where we've actually had a negative percentage. And I'm talking about lower tax askings, which is almost unheard of. And there's been times where it's ranged from point four percent to five point three. But if you look at the last five years average, we've been somewhere between that two and three percent. So I would say, at least in Woodbury County, that we've been fairly fiscally responsible to take those increased valuations and offset them by lowering the levy to the greatest degree possible. And so you're, you're right in a sense, Jim, if next year, if it's ten percent, thirty-five percent, local governments, I think, have a responsibility to keep decreasing the levy and not use all of that new growth. My fear is that for whatever percentage difference, let's say that next year, we would otherwise be at two point eight percent, and you set it at two point five percent, the amount of mandated new services are going to so far outspend that and increase it that local property taxpayers will say, why did you go up so far over and above? And we'll say, well, because one of the five levies, and then we'll have lost them, and they'll say, huh, doesn't matter, my property taxes went up, and we know who did it. So I think that there's a point well taken with it. I think it just becomes the devil with the details, what will that cap be? How will new growth be looked at? And some of those considerations.
Well, there just needs to be a fair way to do this, you know, when all things prepare, if the mandates could have been put on the counties, the taxpayers, and the new revenue and, you know, a fair way to create so that voters know the realities of what you guys have to deal with, and at the same time, trying to, like you said, set some limits on how much people are having to pay. You know, well, thanks, Jeremy, I, I appreciate that. I, I have to be, you know, I have to get going, it took us four days, you know, with the methods of this, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jim, appreciate it.
Senator Carlin, before you go, I want to thank you for, apparently you had some input on the intelligent mail barcode, the chair took action to change the direction on that Senate bill, and I appreciate your help on that.
Well, I appreciate your input on that topic because I just couldn't make much tonight.
Thank you, I'll be sending you something else too.
You're welcome, thank you.
You too, thanks, Senator Carlin.
And so actually, we'll just skip right to that, Pat, go ahead and give a segue.
Intelligent mail barcode was something that the House passed ninety-six to nothing and sent it over to the Senate. Senator Robbie Smith has got a bill that has lots of objectionable stuff in it that the House doesn't even like to talk about. And so, but the, there is a House bill out there that has to deal with the cleanup language for the combination of the city and school elections. And what the intent of that bill was, it was passed last year, to combine the city and school elections, are going to do that this year, but what it's, it was meant to save money and increase participation in both those elections. But what, this is a matter of local control, as the Secretary of State's office has interpreted the current language in the code not to allow us to do statewide vote, or countywide vote centers. We've, in Woodbury County, we've used vote centers very successfully in the school and city elections. We have reduced the number of polling places from twenty-eight to thirteen, but when you do that, you allow the voters to go to any one of those places, they're not relegated to their general election polling places. And so with the, when you combine these elections, you have district overlap, so makes it, the current language makes it very difficult for us to use vote centers. So essentially what it's going to do is double the cost of that election. If you look in the second page there, there's a spreadsheet that has the actual cost in two thousand seventeen city election, and what it's going to cost us if we have to go to those, or go to the general election polling places, it more than doubles the cost for the taxpayers of Woodbury County. I asked PJ on the front page, PJ Jennings is our county attorney, he provided me with language that would allow us to use a countywide vote center. And it's a very simple solution, and with the purchase of the new election equipment that we have, and the use of electronic poll books, is that anybody in the county can go to any one of those polling places in the county to vote. So if they live in Cushing, you drive to Sioux City to work, you can vote in Sioux City in that upcoming election. That's what this language would allow us to do. The Secretary of State's office is resistant to this because they said they would rather see live i-voters, is our voter registration packet, live in every polling place, in order to prevent people from voting twice. We already, what it says in the current law is, if you look in there, it just says that, that's a felony if you vote twice. And that, when we first started doing this, people said, well, I can go to any one of those thirteen places and vote. And I said, and if you do that, you're, you're going to commit thirteen felonies if you do that. And if you, and it's going to be easy because you're using your same name. That's the only, if you're voting twice, you're going to use the same name and you'll be committing a felony. So we don't have that issue right now. We don't need to do that. We have, we are doing that now with thirteen polling places, eighty-five thousand people of the Woodbury County, a hundred and two thousand people live in Woodbury County, eighty-five thousand live in Sioux City. And of that, I don't know how many vote, about forty thousand registered voters are in Sioux City. And we've been doing this for several years without any issue. We haven't ever had anybody try to vote twice. And what it does is, like I said, clean and simple, is that it more than doubles the cost if we have to use general election pre-polling places. We have the new equipment, we have the technology to do it because of electronic poll books. All we're required to do is get the right ballot to the right person. If you, if you're in Cushing from Sioux City, we have the ability to print a paper ballot from our equipment that's out there and allow that person to vote. So it's doable, we have the technology, the devices that have provided us with the, with the new equipment to do it, we use electronic poll books. It's a, it's a simple and easy solution, we should do that, so that the voters of Woodbury County, it gives a convenience to them and it saves us about twice the cost of an election.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you able to use home rule in an election where you want to?
We are not. We have, I mean, this is local control, is, is Wood, the county auditors, this would allow all county auditors to do that if they chose to do it. It's option.
Does every county use electronic poll book?
No, not every county, it's, it's required, I'm not going to say, in that bill, that's one of the things that's required.
Because that was sort of my, without reading through the lines, which is I thought, if you would allow this for every county to use an electronic poll book, to me, it doesn't seem likely. Like, and like you said, there have always been consequences after the fact, or when you have the manual vote, people could probably vote before they're caught, and then you'd have the issue.
What every county is required to do, and this is one of the things that electronic poll book does, is that you have to have, if you don't have the paper register, you have to have every, every voter within the registered county, a registered voter has to be in there. What you do on paper rolls where they don't have. What you do on paper rolls where they don't have, uh, electronic poll books, is they have the ballot style printed out for that election, the ballot style that they need. They would have to do that, it's not nearly efficient because you have to page through all those if it's somebody from outside. So those counties probably wouldn't try to do it if they don't have electronic poll books. But it is something that we do, we don't have, uh, that issue with voter fraud, we've been doing it for several years, and we've never had anybody try to vote twice.
Because it's your system, with your system, if somebody tries to vote twice, they just come up in the computer and they want to vote.
Uh, that's what they're concerned with, is it would be after the fact. Somebody went out there and, uh, tried to vote twice, is that we would know it, but it would be after the fact, but then we would charge them. So, but that's what it, uh, it doesn't happen because, that's what people, we've educated people, they know that it's a felony if you try to vote twice in the same election.
Would there be a way to make it, would there be a proper vote that would be, um...
There is, but, uh, we haven't purchased that, uh, equipment yet, but that's what they're talking about, is that electronic poll book, is they, they would like to be live on iVoters in order to get that issue.
If I was, if I was sitting in Cushing and I was looking at your entry, you voted in Sioux City, would you even say, this guy's already voted?
That technology exists, we don't have that right now.
That's just been drafted.
Pardon?
That's just been drafted.
I gave it to Representative Sexton, and, uh, he thought it was a good idea for rural voters of Iowa. Uh, what is going to happen is, uh, the House File Six ninety-two went over to the Senate, the Senate amended, put all this crap on there, pardon my first one. They're sending it over to the House, and the House is going to, uh, pretty much insist on the language that they have, they'll accept some of the things that they like. But part of what they're going to put on that bill is the Secretary of State's cleanup bill for the city and school election, and that is what I asked Senator, or Representative Sexton to include in that bill, is, is this language. The Secretary of State's office is the one that's kind of red, so it picks up.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Great, well, we want to respect your, your time, I know that we're probably an hour or an hour, and we asked before you, but, does anybody have anything closing, or I know we kind of lost quickly with the...
I was just saying, we do the property taxes real quick, and I do want to go over that a little bit.
How, how is your time going?
My time is okay, because...
They have to get to a birthday party, as long as they stay.
Oh, that's what I want to be here for, I got plenty of time.
Okay.
Well, why don't we, and, and like I alluded to before, I, I want to know what the issues are we can fix. I know if we just get into the liability, don't like the bill, that doesn't help as much. Um, and, and if there's any questions you have for me, or questions I can get for you, why the check is that it's only dealing with the general levy? It sounds to me like every other levy's been excluded. And I think it's good to understand, and I think the, the impetus behind it is really just making sure transparency of people from hiding behind, raise evaluation ten percent, if we can tell everybody the levy tax is two percent, earlier taxes actually won't be a percentage. And I think that's what, are you satisfied?
Before we start, I do have one question, when you said all other levies, and I'll tell you, we just had a four-hour meeting about this bill at the State Police and Fire Pension Board. And for the first time ever since that board's been in effect, we actually are sending letters to the legislature opposing a bill, mainly because of an amendment that was added in the, uh, the subcommittee and passed through to eliminate the trust and agency, and make that under the general fund. Trust and agency is what cities use to pay their pension obligations. And so, what that would cost, and we as a pension board, we've never taken a stand simply because we're, the League of Cities, the State Fire Association, the State Police Association, all have to agree. And all three of those entities, and the county, state-county association, all agreed to oppose this. Different reasons, probably, we opposed it because of the amendment, because it will cost us police and firefighters.
And I did hear about that.
And I, we, nobody knows why, I mean, Doug Gross is our attorney, and he spent an hour trying to explain why, finally, his final answer was, I have no idea why. And the thing is, we look at it as a backdoor attempt to do away with hypers. And we think we got caught as part of the ancillary targets that got hit. And because it will take away the city's ability to pay their pension obligations, because they use trust and agency funds, we don't as a county. But the, the cities do, they, they count on trust and agency because that's one they can levy as needed to fulfill that obligation. And what it would do is, two percent cap on that, once it goes into the general, would mean in bad investment years, because our system is set up very uniquely, the cities fought for this when we combined, was that we don't want to be like Illinois, we don't want to be forty percent funded. What ours does is, every year, after the year's over, the actuaries figure out what it costs to make us whole, and the cities pay that, and that's what they agreed to do.
What I understand would change, all it would do is put more pressure on the cities to find that.
Except if, we have a really bad year, if we have an oh-eight, oh-nine again, but if we have an oh-eight, oh-nine, and all of a sudden the pension obligation jumps up four percent, but it's now in the general fund and they're capped at two, that means they're not going to meet their obligation, or they're going to have to lay off police or firemen in order to meet the obligation.
But I'm saying it's a necessary requirement, like, half of the way, like, you said, they have to find that.
But they use trust and agency, which they're allowed to levy for, under this cap, two percent would be the cap, or whatever number they end up at.
But it's, but that's not, the hypers portion wouldn't be all of the, of the general. So if this is going up four percent, other parts of the budget, that would happen.
But it just, again, it's part of local control, it takes away the city's option of how to fund their pension obligation and keep legitimate services or needed services operating. And it would get to the point, I mean, in bad years, in good years, it'll never matter. And we've had some pretty good years, we have a seven and a half percent assumed rate of return. This year, we're going to be tough to hit it, but we're over three for the fiscal year, so we're still, hopefully, we will. But when we don't, their obligation goes up a little bit, and we don't want to take away their ability to use trust and agency funds to beat that obligation.
So that's, you know, Iowa...
And that's why you'll be seeing, everybody will get a notice from the Municipal Fire and Police Retirement System of Iowa for the first time since nineteen ninety-two, when we formed, that we will actually be taking a stand on a bill. We've always stayed away and said, we'll just stay neutral.
So, Jake, you asked about, you know, what in your, it's easy to just say, okay, yes, four, you know, that's the easiest. If you were to give greater granularity and specify some things, I think might be helpful. So, that percentage growth, the two percent, I think is going to be a discussion. I don't think state governments lived within two percent the last ten years. So I, I would think, whatever, uh, percentage, that may be something to consider. If two percent, I mean, that's below the cost of living, we just settled our union negotiations at three, um, and we have a lot of...
I think the cap should be more like two cap. I think the idea is, if the city or county is going to go over, you know, with this, you know, max cap, is that to be something that, a lot of voters, if they could, you know, weigh in on, maybe they would want to, you know, take a vote on it, and if you want to, you know, not vote for the officials next time, trigger a reverse referendum. My concern is, if you set it too low, does it become something that every, every person just has to override every year, and then the voters become kind of neutral? It's just like, here's our budget, we override the state, we move on. Um, and then that's where the reverse referendum comes in, I think the assumption, more conversations I had last week, was they kind of expect, you know, if everybody will go up to the two, if they do three, then the voters will go, oh, okay, it's only three, we don't care, I'm not to collect signatures and, and go after them if they're going to vote five, and if they will. My concern then with that is, it's twenty percent of the last presidential election, because the number six is required, however they have a cap, two thousand, so, Woodbury County will build from the eight or nine thousand signatures, we can, we can totally get there eventually, you know, I would say would require some bureaucracy and stuff. Now, it comes to two thousand, for a county our size, it almost seems to me like it's a too easy to... So that's, my concern is, if you want to, you guys prooffully do two and a half percent, and three percent, because the probability of that threshold is low, for somebody who already has a personal benefit cost. The idea that there are some, as percentage, the number of signatures, if you're someone that's...
Let's go listen to them, let's go listen to them, because he will tell us what impact...
I, I want to give you an example, we're here for the two thousand twenty base year for our general, general sub, rural, rural sub. Okay, we're combining supplemental funds, half-fund mandated expenses into a limited fund, no cap or limit, two percent. So I'm going to give you an example, we have lawfare contracts up next year for our twenty twenty-one budget, which is a little fat. If they only give two percent for the cost of living, that could be three hundred fifty thousand. In our general base, or general fund, we can only generate five hundred twenty thousand. Also, there is a thing called a general election in the twenty twenty-one budget, it does not budget in this coming year, but it's about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand, that eats up the rest of the month. So we have zero money for any increase of wealth or inflation, or anything else. Then we get to what's called as minimum levy for secondary roads. When we add all this tax base, and assume they're going to gain because of the increase in values, because we don't know what the rollbacks are, and we're having an increase of CF coming online, increases our base out there.
My, my concern is that that would be considered too rough.
You see, that's a huge question. It's a huge question, because we're going to have fifty-five million dollars coming into the county over the next twenty years. So, the devil's in the details, right? If new growth, and you have a twenty-year abatement schedule, is, when you get to year three, and eight, and ten, is that still new growth? Or is that new monies that are due that's coming online? Hey, you have all this new money, well, in years one and two, we put law enforcement down there, we did a lot of roads, we incurred expenses in the middle of the lights of power. So, again, that's not, this is throwing the baby out of the bath water, it's just, it's very, very critical to see how new growth, especially with economic development deals, um, how all of that is factored in.
I know that we're talking about tip, do you report taxation, or do they have something that... Okay, we're not saying this about this.
Not all.
So, then, so... And back, back to secondary roads, we're going to be mandated to be seventy-five percent, four, you lose dollar per dollar. Okay, in rural basic, where we're levying all secondary taxes, we do not levy on two percent. Countywide levy, we're just rural basic, we can generate about sixty-two thousand. With this new valuation coming on, we're going to need a hundred thousand. So if we put all the rural basic, we don't have enough money for anything, we're actually in the hole with a two percent growth. So that's going to force the board to levy sixteen cents against all the cities and county on a countywide level, to even help meet that condition. Some where the states got to look at where things are mandated to the counties, you have, you have to give us funding mechanism. General election is a prime example, we don't have one in the coming year for basic figure-on, but then we got a hundred fifty thousand next year, then we have gone to two percent that didn't exist the previous year. So there's a lot of things that, I don't know, if they, if they had it, please give us the funding mechanism to do it. And right now, yes, we have it, with a two percent cap, we aren't going to have it. Yes, we can go to the voter people, I think law raises two thousand, or a certain percent, whichever is less. So why you take two thousand, people go out here petitionous, which they probably get that overnight, they still like taxes. So we got to do something to allow us to at least pay for things the state is mandating the county to do. We don't, we're going to have zero money left to do any operating, increase any costs for new services. If you have to, you have to be laying people off, that's the reality, we're cut services.
And that was going to be my point, as long as we keep giving the fund mandates, we can, uh, cap you to meet those mandates. It's just, it doesn't work that way, it's just a pathway into weakening pension systems, you know, weakening local governments and local county governments, as it goes. We can, I don't feel that we can cap you.
Well, if you heard Dennis, he didn't say, when you do these, give us the money, he said, give us the opportunity to find a way to fund it. You know, he's not even saying, okay, unfunded mandate, give us money with it, that isn't going to happen, we know that. But at least give us the mechanism in order to operate the way we need to operate.
And I think we can appreciate that there is, that are local governments probably out there that do take the full amount of new growth on assessments and say, we have a levy, and they're, they're... So I do, I do understand that there's, the need, that there's some, it's just, how is it, how is it going to be, yeah, how is it going to be crafted, is it going to be livable? Um, you know, you can give me a fifteen hundred calorie a day diet, don't give me a fifteen, you know, so that's, you know, somehow there's work to be done, and that's...
I hope it is a test.
And if we're going to cap anything, a lot of things, it should be evaluations that keep increasing.
Why should I technically use those? I think the view is that we want the valuations to be negative of the market value. So, say, oh, because they're, and then somehow before the valuations, and we'll have five, so... Well, if this probably really is worth doing, and have a lot of valuations, then the thought is, if the state then doesn't need to be... Just because the valuation works, or that doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, taxing volume needs to... It's not the problem, just because the valuation works out, it may be to, to even lower the... It's a great, I think that's the problem, I think it's just, we want this to be true, but at the same time, we don't want to just have new line of assistance, just to... But like you said, how do we do that?
I just hope the legislature realizes that with supplemental funds, we're tending to fund things that are mandated by law. Health insurance, liability insurance, elections, court costs, not taking that where it's unlimited, with no cap, putting it in with a general fund that has a two percent cap, it's going to be very, very difficult to do it. And if we're like, I'm taking unmandated expenses, we're in a general sub, that we don't, we don't have social security, we don't, we don't know where our health is going, we're self-insured. So if we have a bad year, we have to increase taxes to pay for the, you know, healthcare costs, we've been very, very lucky. But we're taking mandated, unlimited levy, putting in mandated, limited levy, that's going to be very, very difficult. I, please, I hope the legislature understands this, because that causes catastrophic problems for Woodbury County and every county.
And I think the assumption, and I'm not assessing this too, is that if you have a bad year in the market class, and you have tons, I personally, and, uh, healthcare costs and other things, where you need a seven percent increase, I think the least, the attention is that then you could go to vote, and you have to increase the seven percent. This is why, if you will, pay with it. I think we know that this is never, and so how do you structure this away, where it's going to lift all that scrutiny?
And the bad part to that is, you would be doing it after all their Ks and everything else just went down. Then you'd be hitting them up saying, hey, because everything went down, we need more money from you. And I could tell you what that would be, I'd vote no.
Well, and the other thing, that we haven't seen our general basic cap the last six years, which requires public hearing, subject to a referendum potential, it's never happened. But we explained it good enough, and why we, well, it's going to be a lot harder now, if you buy a lot of mandated things, or unlimited, you do a limited two percent growth, I guess it'll be very hard.
Please, we need help, I asked you all for forty-five minutes, and you gave us about an hour and fifteen, we really appreciate. And, and I think we would, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think this would be very helpful each year, while you're in session, if you're open to it, and, you know, we know you spend a lot of time away from your families, and, you know, so thank you very, very much.
Maybe earlier in the session next year.